Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I press send now?
Thank you. The town of Burlington will be holding the September 19, 2024 meeting as a hybrid meeting. The governor issued an executive order on March 12, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under general law, Chapter 38, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31, 2025.
And as always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those seeking to attend remotely may do so via the following. Townofburlingtonwebx.com is the URL. Our meeting number is 2337-957-3013. Our meeting password is 1645. You can also join the WebEx on your phone at 617-315-0704. Please be aware that using your web browser for the WebEx, we found that it's a little bit buggy, so we recommend that you download WebEx software and use that when logging into our meetings, so that your sound will work properly. And those looking to participate remotely, please raise your hand. In the WebEx, and staff will send your request to unmute at the appropriate time. The meeting is being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel. You can find it on Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon 41, or streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page.
Thank you, Liz. First on the agenda is public participation. Is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? We have a victim. Please come up and introduce yourself.
Either way.
Yeah, either one. And we're going to give you about three minutes. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
My name is Betsy Hughes. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 7. I'm also on the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, and I'm on their Subcommittee on Signage, and that's why I'm here tonight.
Okay.
I just wanted to provide an update to this body of where we are on the signage Subcommittee. We, as I think you all know, got approval for funds in May to engage with a consultant, which we did. We went out to bid for three different consultants, chose a consultant, U Teal, which came very highly recommended, and got the contract signed with them shortly after the beginning of our fiscal year on July 11. Commenced work in early August with them. We started by providing them, not only with a scope document, but with the town center district design, should be familiar to you all because you created it, document, the master plan, the zoning bylaws that we have, and the zoning map, so they could do some homework before we even got started as a committee. And we also gave them a draft of the signage bylaws that the team had put together. I should mention that the team was put together involving the Economic Development Director, Planning Board, Ernie's on our team here, as well as ZBA, it started with Mike Murray on that, and the building director was also on it, and we've consulted with many others, and Liz is in on this faction as well. So anyhow, so we had our kickoff meeting on August 6. We had the consultants come for a site visit. We gave them a tour of the town center overlay, because we had decided that we're going to start with the town center as our first signage district, so that they could get a lay of the land. They took a lot of photos, and then they developed a current state document, which is going to evolve from current state with comments about things that are appropriate, maybe not so much, what's for a town like ours, what kinds of things, given what we're trying to accomplish with the plans that have been put together, and suggestions for improvement. The next step is focus groups, which we're kicking off next week with businesses in the town center. We sent out 76 invitations for focus group participants, and we're starting to hear back from them. We're going to do one next week and one on October 2. They're both after work, because we had a meeting beforehand with Mike Murray from Murray Hills and with Rick Parker from the Chamber, briefed them on the project, what we were doing, got a lot of input from them on what the current state was from their perspective on signage and how the different businesses perceive that to be. And informed by that, we put together the questions that we're going to use for these focus groups. After that, we're going to put together recommendations for how we should modify the signage regulations that we have put together. We'll be coming back to boards and committees. Our intent is to have this ready to rock and roll on January 1 for town meeting in January. So it is really a very action-packed, from May to January, project, and hopefully we can stay on track. But I want to keep this particular group very much involved, and I want to let you all know that if anybody, and I know that you were so involved in developing the original rules and regulations for the town center, signage is really an important part of communicating the look and feel and the image that we're trying to communicate to people as they drive by, as a classic, that's my new term, classic, town. And so if anybody would like any further information, or want to talk further about anything that we're finding, or look at any of the documents, I'd be happy to share it. So.
Betsy, thank you. Well, just, that's a very important topic, and I appreciate you and your group's effort. I've been to a couple of the meetings myself, and a lot of good work on that, but difficult work, right? So maybe if you wouldn't mind, I would like just open up to the board on this important topic to see if they have any specific questions. But I know, Ernie, you're on the team.
No, I think, thanks to Betsy and Sally and Shari for taking the reins and really pushing it forward. Our little sign bylaw Subcommittee of the Zoning Bylaw Committee has worked for about two and a half, three years, every other Tuesday night. And we've got some basis down, and now hopefully the consultant can build from that and understand what we want. And I know that we're looking to maintain the town center as a classy, classic, whatever, looking area. And I think the way we're doing it, and I don't know if it's suggested by Liz or Kristen or Sally or whoever, but we're doing it in geographic areas rather than zoning areas, because obviously if you have a business on the Middlesex Turnpike, it's different than you have a business in the wind there. So we elected to take the tough one first, about the town center.
Excellent. Ernie, thank you for your efforts on the group as well. Ms. Laurel.
I don't have a lot to add. I haven't been participating in this project, but I'm so grateful that you guys are taking it on, because it is very needed, and I'm just really happy that you're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Impemba.
Yeah, I echo all those, and it's such a good idea to be breaking it down into the geographic areas. As you know, Bill, we were on.
A couple of.
We tried to tackle a couple of years and tried to tackle the whole town at once, and that's not the way to do it.
Yep.
And I really feel like that downtown area is so important. First of all, I'm glad it's being done first, and secondly, I'm glad that it's being isolated, and I'm hoping that most people are on the same page with it, and there's not a lot of in-fighting and whatever on the board, you know, on the committee that we experienced trying to tackle the whole town, and having a lot of these, you know, high-rises and other buildings and other people wanting to be seen from the highway and all these, you know. So hopefully it's a little more doable, and it's a little more, you know, able to get your arms around a little bit better. But it is probably, as you say, it's one of the things that impacts that center of town. The signage will impact, and I believe bring the vision of the downtown center together almost more than anything else, you know. I mean, obviously, you know, design and material review are a major factor there, but signage is such a big point. You can either make or break an area like that.
And part of what we're doing is, thank you, by the way, the part of what we're doing is, is not only the bylaw, but there are going to be guidelines to go along with it, design guidelines with, you talked about materials and that sort of thing, is going to be part of it, to make it easier for the Director of Buildings and for you all as you approve things, but for them to not only approve, but to enforce the regulations that are put in place. And we did decide right from the beginning, we're going to take this in manageable chunks, and the town center overlay is the first signage district. So I think the biggest challenge for us as we start communicating this is going to make sure that people understand that we're only talking about the town center overlay. The other thing that, just to make a point, is this is a zoning bylaw, not a general bylaw, so that things will not change immediately. It's not going to have a sunset clause. It is when there are changes, you know, buildings get renovated, a new tenant, whatever, or some sort of substantial change to be defined in this bylaw. That's part of our challenge. So it will take time for this to evolve, and before you see any differences.
And it's funny you say, you mentioned that, because that was going to be my next question too, is are you going to be able to put it into the general bylaw to make, you know, to allow sunset clauses, to be able to get this, you know, because as you said, I mean, some of the businesses we've just, you know, we've just permitted in the past year or two years, they're going to be there for 20 years, hopefully 50 years. Does that mean we'll never see a change?
So our strategy right from the get-go is that we want to make something happen. And so part of that is just stay focused on what you're trying to do. There are all kinds of tangential issues that have been thrown in the pot that, outside of scope, nope, that's going in a parking lot, and that's kind of how we have to manage this, in order not only to stay on budget, but to make sure that we accomplish it. So, you know, that's a good example of, you know, some of the things that we're going to have to, the general bylaw, we'll come back at that later, but right now we're going for zoning. We are only focused on zoning.
And it's good. And, you know, another way to do it could possibly be, if Mike Murray's in there, and they have, you know, obviously they own the majority of the downtown center, if they were willing, they could also incorporate it into their leases, and then when these leases maybe re-up, maybe there's a two-year lease, three-year lease. When that lease re-ups, they can say, now we want an updated sign as well. So, you know, might be another way to skin that cat, you know?
Yeah, I think Mike has been a really helpful contributor to this process. He and Rick both took the invitations and sent them out to their groups and encouraged people to come, not just having it come from us. So he's been a really good partner, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping if this starts going and some of the businesses start adopting this, as they start to see that it's only in their best interest, the visibility for these shops will increase dramatically if, in the direction that I think we're going to go in. And I think there's enough business rationale for them to make the investment, to actually make it happen sooner as opposed to later, but we'll see. I'm not in their shoes.
Yeah, I mean, I think a big component of that, not to belabor the whole thing, but I think it's an important issue that should be talked about, but I think one of the important components, the thing that they need, a lot of these tenants down there need to understand is, you're really, you're getting very, very little, if any, business from people that are driving down 3A, looking to the side and looking to the side to know your business there. I mean, that's really just not today's world. You know, these businesses are known because people are on social media, they're on, you know, they're advertising all over the place, and they have GPS, and nobody needs to be looking for a sign to find, you know, to find a store these days, you know? So I think that's, you know, when people fully buy into that concept, it's going to be an easier, an easier adjustment as well.
Thank you, Joe. Ms. Nistola.
I just wanted to say thank you, Betsy, and to your committee for tackling such a large project. You're doing a great job, and I'm interested in what she said that she wants to say. Yeah, I'd like to read what you did. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nistola. Just my comments here. I think you made the point that seeing other business, once they start to do it, and other businesses will see how they can enhance their business by putting in some, I would use the term timeless, right, classic timeless for the downtown. I think, and I fear that maybe, since you've laser-focused on this, that the timing of the electronic sign on the comm is probably in the parking lot, or has your consultants looked at that?
No, absolutely. That is outside the scope of what we're dealing with.
Unfortunate, yeah.
Sorry.
Yep. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Staff announcements, please.
Yeah, so the Town Center Beer Garden, which is happening Thursday through September, which is happening right now, and the last one will be next week on the 26th. Those go from 4:30 to 8:30, and that's at the Pocket Park, 202 Cambridge Street, that's being put on by the Economic Development Office, and I know that Melissa and Kelly have been doing a great job with that. There's live music, there's local businesses, there's food down there, so definitely recommend everyone getting out there to kind of just check it out. September Town Meeting is happening next Monday, which is September 23, and that begins at 7:00 PM at the Burlington High School Auditorium. And then Household Hazards Waste Day is September 28, which is next Saturday, from 8:30 to 12, and that's at Fox Hill School.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Laurel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to remind everyone that the People Helping People Family Feud is this Saturday, the September 21st, at the Billericay Elks, I think at 5:00 PM? Is that right?
Yep.
5:00 PM. There's been some trash talking, so I'm hoping that there will be some people coming to support the Planning to Win Team.
The Planning to Win Team, well, good luck to the Planning to Win, Planning Board representatives, so I know you bring your best foot forward there and show the board proud there, so.
Mr. Chair, quick other update. I believe I was speaking to the moderator, and also to Amy Warfield, and the consensus is that we're going to go at least two nights for town meeting.
Two nights for town meeting?
It is unlikely that zoning things will happen on Monday.
Okay.
It would be.
So it's Monday, Wednesday?
Monday and Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Laurel, you can make Wednesday as well? Okay, thank you. Okay, legal notice of interest, none, non-approvals, none, administrative matters. So there's an item A, the application for endorsement of a plan believed not to require approval. That's 17 Church Lane, Rezi Wu, Mei Hau Li are the applicants. Do you have anybody here for that? Yes. Please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thomas Murphy, I'm here representing the two property owners that are involved in this situation. I don't know whether you've had a chance to look over the application, but in a nutshell, there was some sort of boundary dispute that arose between them. They each have attorneys representing them in that dispute. The case actually went to the land court on an adverse possession action. And as, I know some of you know, the land court is a very time-consuming process and expensive, so the parties were able, with their attorneys, to sit down and work something out, essentially. And the result of their negotiations and settlement is that a small sliver of land was going to be transferred from the owners of 1 Raymond Road to the owners of 17 Church Lane. The plan that was submitted shows that parcel to be 118 square feet of land, has three feet of frontage on Church Lane, and kind of goes back in a pie shape towards the back of the yard. So it's not a very big parcel of land, but it was enough to alleviate the concerns of the 17 Church Lane owners, so all parties think that this is a fair settlement.
Great.
So obviously, we first had to get a variance, because the, both lots are non-conforming, but the 1 Raymond Road lot, by making it less non-conforming, that we lost the non-conforming status, so we needed a variance for them, which we received from the Board of Appeals back in the summer sometime. And now we're before this board with an A&R plan, and with your approval, the parties will then transfer the 118-square-foot parcel from the Raymond Road people to the Church Lane people.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Murphy. Steph, any comments?
Nope, that was essentially what I was going to say. So it's a pretty straightforward A&R plan, so don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Planning Board members on the left, but Ms. Nistola.
No comment.
Okay.
I would say when you get all the parties that agree, let's get a sign.
Very quickly.
Side it quick.
Ms. LaGru.
I have no comment.
Mr. Cavino.
Also, thank you.
And I'm also there as well. So may I have a motion? Uh, no, let me see, is there a motion here? Let me see. We are here.
Yes.
Yep, next page.
Yeah, okay, we have a motion. Or?
Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve and sign the Approval Not Required Plan entitled Plan of Land in Burlington, Mass., prepared by A.C. Nelson Cartography, dated June 19, 2024, reflecting the conveyance of a 118-square-foot parcel of land, having 3.08 feet of frontage on Church Lane, parcel A, from 1 Raymond Road, map 29, parcel 650, to 17 Church Lane, map 29, parcel 660. The Planning Board finds that this is a proper submission of an Approval Not Required Plan. The applicant shall submit an electronic PDF of the endorsed Approval Not Required Plan to the Planning Board Office within four weeks of this approval. Proof of recording with the registry of deeds shall be provided to the Planning Department upon completion.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Let's go 5-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Item B, discussion for request for approval of minor engineering change, 61 Millsex Turnpike, Noria Energy is the applicant.
I'm also hearing that one, Mr. Chairman. Again, Thomas Murphy for Noria Energy. With me is Mike Durant, who's the person in charge of this project for Noria Energy. Again, by way of background, the board might remember, this was before the board, back a year and a half, two years ago now, maybe, on the site plan approval and a special permit, they redeveloped a property down at Middlesex Turnpike, Shell Gas Station, combined with a lot that used to have the DeAngelo Sub Shop, I think it was. In any event, it's, this board obviously approved it, the reconstruction went forward. If you've been down that area recently, you can see that the building's up and running. As part of the planning, back when we first spoke, they were going to put some EV charging stations in as part of the services they were going to offer to their customers. At the time that we got site plan approval, that hadn't been engineered yet, so the understanding was that we would deal with that once we got to that point. Back this spring, they came in to finalize their as-built plan. At that point, they wanted to get the EV information onto the plan. The building inspector made the determination that we needed a variance in order to do that, so we went and got variance. That's been approved. Appeal period has expired on that. So the last step in the rather long process is to get the EV items onto the approved site plan, so that we can pull a permit and get them installed. So that's what the gist behind the applications that's before the board tonight, and we're obviously happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Thank you. Staff, please.
So this is kind of a, you know, we standard, we, as a standard, kind of have always, you know, EV charging, you know, have done it as kind of an insignificant change or a minor engineering change, but this is a fueling, you know, this is a fueling station, and then, you know, the EVs are also a fueling station, and so I think that kind of needs to be flushed out a little bit as just, you know, as a future policy choice of this board, not necessarily for this application in general, but it's just something that we talked about at the pre-meeting, is kind of how we want to be kind of looking at EV and the future of EV and, you know, how we should be setting ourselves up for success in the future of that. So I think that this is, you know, this is a good, a good starting off point to kind of think about that in the future.
Yep, thank you. So, yeah, this is my request that we bring this, I would normally have just approved this as a minor engineering change for EV. If it was any other spot, I would say, you know, it's kind of an accessory use to the main place that you're going to go and, you know, spend time at a place and just charge up at this, where this was a non-conforming use, and we added 1, 2, 3, 4 new spots for the fueling, for gas fueling, and I looked at this a little differently and said, well, you're not really coming here for the convenience store there, and then want to spend a lot of time in there while you charge up. This is, you know, four more fueling stations, if you will. So now we've added the four more fueling stations to bring it to, what was it before? It was 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. Now we've got 13, 14, 15, 16, kind of in general. And we don't have a policy for that, and I did a little research to see what's everyone else doing, and there's not a lot on it, because I think it's fairly new. So just to kind of bring it to the board as we think about this, and how we want to address that for anybody else, because that takes up 25% of the fueling, you know, fueling, so now you can kind of, things are going to change over time, so just for the folks to understand where I'm coming from, to bring this to the board, so we can think about it a little bit more and maybe have a strategy and do a little homework on it. So I'll set it up. Mr. Impemba, any comments on that?
Couple of questions. So I'm assuming that these are universal stations, right? They're not for any particular kind of car? Any particular kind of an EV?
For the record, Mike Durant, Noria Energy, to answer that question, yes, the EV charges that we're proposing are universal. They're not specific like a Tesla charger.
So any EV you can charge at that station?
As long as they have a proper adapter, if someone comes up and it doesn't work with their particular vehicle, usually they'll have an adapter in their vehicle.
Okay. So my next question is, are these, because I know there are different types of charging stations, some charge faster than others, some take a night, a whole night to charge, some take a couple of hours, some take a, I would expect and I would hope that these are the fastest stations, because, you know, it doesn't really matter when you're at a mall, but when you're in a location like this, you know, you're not going to be parking your car there all day and then, you know, going in and short for two hours, you know?
Yes, as a matter of convenience, these are fast chargers. So when people generally would come to our locations, usually quick in, quick out, so they're able to still maintain that type of use, quick in, quick out with the fast chargers.
And so are these the fastest ones that are on the market, that are available in a, you know, lot scale, I guess, you know, universal type of a?
I'd have to say, a little difficult to say, because the technology is constantly changing. These are newer chargers that are in the industry and out on the market. They are, there are units that work with our setup, with our layouts, they're the type that don't require an additional electrical equipment. They're essentially battery storage, and then they'll discharge the electricity to the vehicles when someone pulls up to use them.
Okay. So how long does it take to go, to do a full charge in a car, on a station like that?
It would depend on the vehicle. Typically, though, electric vehicles, as you get towards your last 15, 10% of charge, that's what takes the longest to charge a vehicle. So if you're, let's say you're at 50% of charge, and you need to get to 80%, and you need to get home, that may take, you know, minutes, as opposed to the last 10% of your charge might take double, triple the time.
So is there, will there be any time limitations on vehicles parked in that, in front of that charger or using that charger?
That's a marketing question, but they still have to work out the details on that. But I don't believe there's, we're not setting any time limits.
I would submit, however, that, given what I just heard about the duration, somebody who stops off the highway to get a charge is probably on their way someplace. I can't see them wanting to spend an extra hour sitting on the Middlesex Turnpike if they didn't have to, so they probably charge it as quickly as they can, get enough to go home or wherever they're going.
Right. My only fear is that, you know, within walking distance, we have Trader Joe's, we have, you know, we have Bob's Furniture Show, we have, you know, things that people might want to visit and stay for a while, and, you know, we can't be letting them stay there and, you know, and take up a spot.
I'm sure, I'm sure there'll be some policy to avoid people taking advantage of the situation, but whether it takes 15 minutes or 20 minutes, it's hard to tell, could take a half an hour if they wanted to go that last 10%.
Right.
You know, if you want something like, you know, more than two hours or some umbrella number, I'm sure we could probably work that into it.
And then my last question would be, as technology changes, because I guarantee you, next year, they're going to have faster stations, how easy is it going to be to retrofit? And is that something that this company that's going to be putting these in is going to be wanting to stay on the cutting edge of that? wanting to stay on the cutting edge of that? Is it going to be a difficult remove the whole system and put a new system in, or will they?
It would depend.
Retrofit these things on to existing stations?
I think it would depend on the, the equipment that's chosen for any type of replacement, but we do try to future-proof our, our sites, laying out the infrastructure, laying out just the general setup for EV charging. So if technology changes in just a few more years, we should have the opportunity and the ability to, to upgrade as necessary.
I think you make some great points, and I'm just going to jump in and say, is reconsider this, you know, maybe there's things, you know, as, as conditions on this is, if the technology changes, they come back, because then it changes the whole, you know, you know, system and how long they stay and things like that. Go ahead, Ms. Natale, please.
No, I don't really have any questions at this time. I was just listening to.
Yeah, good stuff. Ms. LaRue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple of questions. A lot of times what you see at these charging stations is a sign that says you can park here only while charging, so therefore, if it takes 20 minutes to charge your car, you can't leave it there for two hours. Is that what you intend?
The parking spaces aren't necessarily intended only for EV parking.
Okay, so anyone could park there even if they're not charging?
Hmm, okay. But only with an EV vehicle?
I don't know.
I'm sorry?
With only with an EV vehicle, would there be parking spaces labeled?
The intention would be for EV, for only EV parking, but I don't believe we could restrict those parking spaces to only EV vehicles.
I think what I've seen, they have a sign that says only while charging, they don't come and actually tow your car away if you finish charging and you haven't come back for it, but it does, I think, encourage people to do the right thing and move their car out of that space once they've finished charging. I'm not expecting you to police it and tow people. I just would suggest that's something you could consider.
Sure. Yep, we could look at that.
Mr. Impemba, please.
So we could address that simply by putting a restriction on it to say that those, those parking spots are only for, for business on that site? We can restrict that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if, I personally don't know if I would want to do that, because I, where this is located, I could see people stopping there, charging their car, going over to Dunkin' Donuts and getting a cup of coffee for a couple of, you know, for 10 or 15 minutes, and then coming back. What you want to avoid is people who disappear for hours on end and the car has been charged already. I don't consider, given this location, that it's a really big risk, because it's not really conducive to that. It's possible. I don't consider it likely, so I'm not overly concerned about it, but I would ask you consider a sign that says only while charging. I also had a question about whether or not these are branded. Is this, you know, there's ChargePoint and there's EVgo, is this a Noria branded spot, or is it one of those more national brands?
It's a universal brand.
So they pay, how do they pay? Because with ChargePoint or EVgo, you have to have an app.
So they're in development with a, with a Noria app to.
So it is Noria branded?
It's currently not Noria branded. It's still open, but we are working on an app to integrate into Noria Rewards.
So they'll pay through the Noria app for their charge?
At the, at the charger itself, it has its own separate software that, that runs the transactions through the charger.
So do you swipe a card at the charger itself?
Whether to swipe.
Or it's on an app?
Yeah, you'll use your.
Usually it's on an app.
Electron, credit card.
Okay. And you already have a variance for the setback, right?
We do.
Okay. So I have no problem with this. I, if memory serves, I voted against your original application, because I did not want to expand the non-conforming use and go up to 12 gas pumps, but I don't have a problem with the EV charging stations, so I am in favor of this for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Covino.
Yeah, to answer one of your questions, or at least in my opinion, Bill, as, as the state-of-the-art progresses, I think we have to constantly be making adjustments, because these things eventually, maybe not in my lifetime, but will replace the gas pumps.
Yeah, yeah.
My, my other question is, I hadn't realized that this technology was available where instead of actually charging the car, the electricity charges batteries, and then the batteries charge the car. So there's got to be some substantial batteries here, am I correct?
They're, they're a good size, but they're compact, so it's a relatively small footprint.
So my, my concern, having a firefighter in the family, is, is the fire, does the fire department get, wait, does the fire department get notified if there's significant changes?
Well, so they were notified on this as a minor engineering?
They were, okay.
Yes, correct.
Because I know there, there have been numerous problems with EV vehicles not being, catching the battery catches on the air, they can't put them out.
Yeah.
Oh, I watch these EVs are fuel cell based.
Yeah, so if the, yeah, if the, if the battery that's going to be charging the cars with lithium ion battery, then if that is exposed to water, to lithium, it tends to explode, my experience.
I just wanted to make sure that all parties.
Yeah, but, yeah, I, yeah, I don't know if, because I was always in the impression, like you, Mr. Covino, that, that the, the electricity was coming in and is going directly, transferring to the car versus it going to a battery, and now, but that was something I was.
Into the car battery or into a different battery?
Into a battery in the, in the station, and then that stays, and then it just.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably see much more of that, I mean.
Probably has to do with the.
Have the battery walls and.
Yeah, yeah. Probably has to do with the electrical rates, so you're going to, you're going to charge the battery at the, the station when the, when the cost is cheaper for electricity and things like that.
And just actually, the installation is going to be cheaper, because you can slow charge those batteries and faster.
Exactly. Yeah, okay, thank you, good question. So, you know, as it sounds, you know, as all these questions are coming at, they're great questions, and I think it is, because this is the first time we're, we're hearing this, and just from what I'm hearing, you know, and I know that you said it's, it's an accessory, but I, I see this as a primary use from the conversation versus an accessory use at this particular location, so that's why it's a little bit different in my mind. The only other concern I had is that of, when we approved this, we approved the, I don't know, we had 12 spaces or something on the, on the sheet there, so now, and that was for everybody to go into the convenience store, and you can, these, these take up four of that, so now you're taking up, you know, a third of the spaces that, that gas vehicles cannot stop in the convenience store to just drop in and, and get their convenience items. So that's a big portion of it, that the, the non-electric vehicles, and it's only for charging, so you kind of, it, it's kind of a conundrum here, and it kind of flips it from a minor engineering change to saying this is fairly minor, because you're taking up, what we approved, you're taking a third of the spaces up just for electric vehicles, so.
Changes the site plan.
Absolutely, yeah, and the application and the intent and things like that, so that's just my, my comments there. Okay, and now, I know this is not a public hearing, but is there anybody in the audience that wants to chat about this? There is someone, okay? So we're just, I'm, I'm allowing that today, and if, again, you came before, but reintroduce yourself, please.
Sure. Betsy Hughes, Precinct 7, Town Meeting Member. So, and I also live in that part of Burlington, and I wanted, and I think I spoke to some of you about this before, when this, when this gas station went in, and the people who live on my side of town had some real concerns about the, the way it was done, where it's so close to the road. If you look at all the other things that you all have approved, you know, whether it's the Dunkin' Donuts with the green way before you get to the sidewalk in the road, or that nice new building on the other side with trees and all the green there. This one has, you know, goes right up to, the building goes right to the sidewalk, where they have this patio that nobody ever sits at, it's just a big brick wall, and, and, and I think there's very little attention paid to the aesthetic of this, the green space there, there's a little bit of a multi-area with some plants in it on the front, but if you're looking to expand the, kind of the commercial gas station-y look here, I just would like to encourage you to think about what else can be done to improve the aesthetics of this. We've, we've done that in such a nice job in other parts of Middlesex Turnpike, and there's an opportunity, as these buildings start turning over, to actually make Middlesex Turnpike, which is the entrance to Burlington, if you're coming in on Lowell Street or from Lexington, it's the entrance to Burlington, and to make it, you know, look better than it does, classic, whatever, you know? So I just, I, I, you know, I, I don't have anything against having a gas station there, but it, it really needs to, I think the appearance does not do justice to the community in which it sits, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Any comments from the board on that?
Looking at the plan, I think it's this, this little sliver of landscaped island, right? Is that the only opportunity we have?
You know, is, I was at the Dunkin' Donuts recently, and I'm wondering if there's anything on the area between, it's going to be a lot of equipment down there for the EV, but is there anything to, maybe in that one spot that says limit of existing development area, limit of work, is there opportunity there further down to put in some landscaping to maybe buffer all that equipment that's going to be back there because the EV?
Mr. Chair, so I recall, when this was first permitted, there was a fairly substantial landscaping plan that was associated with, with the permit. I don't know if the plants just aren't mature enough and haven't come in, but it's definitely something to look at, because we, I remember, when you look at that plan, it is, the landscaping does look quite robust on the, on the site plan, the landscaping plan.
So perhaps I could ask the applicant what's there now in the landscaping bed in the front?
Yes, Mr. Murphy.
I just want to, going back to when we were going through the permitting process a year or two ago, the board might remember that it was the board's desire, and client complied, to make this more of a, not, not just like the regular gas station-y type of a place with four square, you wanted more of a colonial motif and colonial design, which they complied with, in, at a fairly significant additional cost to them, and it's also different than all of their other buildings, but they did it to, there might be one other one that you used as an example somewhere. But the point being is, there was a lot of discussion about the aesthetics, because clearly it's, it is a gateway community, but it's also a relatively small lot, would certainly suggest that looks a lot better than it did with the old DeAngelo's Pizza Shop and the old gas station that were there for a lot, a lot of years. So we're obviously able and willing to augment the plantings or whatever, to whatever degree you guys think might be acceptable. Liz made a good point on the, on the, on the plan that was submitted, I don't know how that looks on the ground so far, but I just want to remind the board that there was a lot of work put towards the aesthetics back at the time by this board at, at your direction, and I think we did a pretty good job of, of agreeing to what you were asking to do in the building itself as, as an example.
Yes, Ms., sorry, Joe, Ms. LaRue, please.
My question was, what is currently in that landscape bed? Because if it is, if it's annual flowers, they're not going to get any bigger or more robust. If they're small trees or bushes, they're going to grow and become more substantial over time. Do you know what's there today?
We have small trees or shrubs, tall shrubs, that have a chance to grow and mature, and I think they'll become significantly more robust over the coming years.
So, Mr. Chair, perhaps what we need to do is ask Caleb, our staff, over the next few weeks, to get down there and compare what's there to what was on the plan, and make sure that it's been built to our specifications.
I'd be happy to do that. I know Caleb's going to be busy the next couple of weeks, so.
That's true.
Mr. Impemba, any comments?
Yeah, I, I can't imagine we didn't ask for trees in there, because that would have been one of the first things we asked for, but, to a point, I, I agree, I mean, I, there's only so much you can do with the site, you know, which, and what we were looking at prior to what's there now was, was not anything, anything great to look at, but in my opinion, I think it's aesthetically a lot nicer than it was, but I, I would be very surprised if we didn't require trees to be put in, because that's one of the things.
That would be very unlike us.
It would be very unlike us, and I can't imagine that that didn't happen.
It was the sidewalk, that, Betsy.
Right.
It was the sidewalk.
So I'm, so again, I think what we need to do, maybe we, if we put it as a condition or whatever we do, that we get out and review the landscape, and it sounds like you guys would be willing to enhance the landscaping down there to the point where.
If something on the landscaping plan either wasn't put in or has died and needs to be replaced, we can cooperate with that. I do remember somewhat, there were some trees, like on the side, on the, towards the.
We did have to remove some, some trees with the guidance and approval of Conservation Commission. There were some minor, I think some minor changes to landscaping, but with installing the EV equipment, there's probably going to be a little bit of reconfiguration of plantings, but all the, all the plantings that are out there should stay just, maybe just slight relocation.
Mr. Impemba, please.
My suggestion would be, because, I mean, even to Betsy's point, I, my preference would be to have Middlesex Turnpike tree lined.
Sure, yeah.
Like, like you'd see in, you know, in any beautiful area of any other town, and so, I, I mean, if, if we can look at that with that in mind, and maybe if you guys are willing not, even if it takes a small, you know, a, some sort of amendment to the landscape plan, to be able to look at some trees lying in the street, because trees are always going to do a lot more than shrubs are going to do for the, for the appearance all the time in that area, you know?
I think there was some discussion about that, Joe. I think one of the issues was the narrowness of the, of the strip.
Right.
You know, as far as root ball and things like that, so there's, there's only so much you can put in there that would.
Right.
Realistically be able to, to survive, so, again, I'm not a plant person, so.
Yeah, I know there are trees, I know there are trees in the centers of most towns that just, they don't even spread that much, you know, the root systems are as narrow as the up, and they're made specifically to line the streets.
We'd be willing, if Caleb or somebody, if you guys want to go out, check it against the existing plan, and if you can think of some tweaks that are reasonable, we're happy to do that.
Mr. Chair, perhaps we could put an amendment or a change to the approval that says pending approval of the chair when they come out, go out and meet with the applicant regarding landscape. I'm, I would be very comfortable leaving it in your hands.
And I know I brought before the board that there's, I forget what they called back, staff and Caleb, that, that a approach that they have trees that they actually can contain, remember where that was? We had that a couple of years ago. I saw that actually when I was, I was down in South Shore, and they had, it was from.
There are trees in cities that are in.
Yeah, and it was, it was that thing, I actually have it on my phone, it was from my, it was from, it was some college that, maybe even UNH.
Yeah, it was UNH. I know exactly what you're talking about.
So we can explore that, and I'd like to see the board just get a view of that as well.
Yeah, those are, yeah, it's, I think that what you're talking about.
It can be done.
Is, is more for stormwater management.
Yes, that's right.
One of the things I do want to mention, and it's kind of hard to see on the screen, is that, that, that strip in the, in the middle between.
Smaller than we thought.
There's the five-foot sidewalk, and then there is, it's really, really narrow, Joe.
It's very narrow.
So, yeah, so I, we will, we can definitely look at it. I do remember that there were trees kind of to the right of the, the building, that, you know, where the outdoor seating is, and then next to that, they were required to install some trees.
Yeah, okay.
But we can, we can definitely.
I'll bounce it against, I'll be happy to.
Even on sidewalks, I know now they can cut into a sidewalk.
Yes.
And I've seen use like a, you know, like a grate.
A grate, yeah.
Like a grate that goes over it that continues the sidewalk, but it allows breathing room for the, for the, for the tree.
Yeah.
Not to interrupt, but I, I heard Barbara's suggested motion, and my only request, if this doesn't get approved, we can't pull the permit to get the EV equipment in until this is on the plan. I have no problem with the, the merit behind you, but rather than say approval will be made once the chair has gone out and checked out the, any enhanced, if there's any way we can approve it tonight, and the applicant agrees to have a six-month review of the plantings.
Right. That, I was, that's kind of what I was suggesting, I just probably didn't phrase it very well. I meant approval with the condition that the landscaping would then be.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood.
I don't think I phrased it very well.
I just wanted to delay the approval, because that would delay the project.
Yes.
Yep, okay, thank you. Good. Ms. Natale, anything? Okay.
No.
Okay, great. Is there, is there a motion? This is not a public hearing.
Okay.
It's at the very bottom of page three.
Yeah, very bottom, yeah.
All right. Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change for property located.
approval of a minor engineering change for property located at 59, 61, and 63 Middlesex Turnpike to approve the installation of two dual-port electric vehicle charging stations and supporting infrastructure as reflected on the site plan entitled Proposed Site Plan Documents for Proposed Fuel Station and Convenience Store prepared by Bowler Engineering consisting of one sheet dated May 6, 2024, and revised to August 30, 2024, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions as amended.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you. Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, I just want to, you know, it's, I don't know if we want to set up a something, maybe as we have potential strategy session, this could be one of the items here where we want to go with electric vehicle, with gas stations in particular.
Agreed. Agreed, and we should look into those trees because I know I've been, when I visit my sister in Pittsburgh, it's a city, and they have trees in little, probably not even three feet wide squares.
Yep.
And they're great.
Yep, so that could be along the way. Yep, they do, yep, thank you. All right, so matters of appointment, this is a public hearing. We have item A, public hearing for an application of approval of special permit pursuant to 4.6.10 Restaurant Fast Order Food and Takeout of the zoning bylaws 75 Middlesex Turnpike, which is the Burlington Mall. Nova Land LLC is the applicant. Sir.
Yeah.
Introduce yourself.
Yeah, yeah. Hello, Mr. Chair, hello, the board members. It's really nice to participate in this meeting today. My name is Yan Liu. I'm the business owner of Nova Gelato and Bakery. Our store is located in the Burlington Mall and has served the local customers for one year. We are applying the special permit because we would like to continue to run the business for a longer time. So our store hours are following Burlington Mall's hours, so 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM from Monday to Thursday, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Friday and Saturday, and 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sunday. We provide high-quality, fresh-made gelato to our customers, and there are no dine-in seats. I work as the store manager with three employees. We have received 106 customer reviews under Google so far, and the score is 4.9 out of 5. This is our first gelato store, and we would like to dedicate, to develop more good products to serve the community. Also, we volunteered and sponsored the Burlington Library for their summer-ending ice cream event last month. We have built a, we have built a good relationship with the Simon Property Management Group, which is the owner of the Burlington Mall during the past year, and I'm also doing some other business with their wisdom in the New England area, and they gave me a lot of support. Thank you for your time. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. I personally appreciate you working with the library as a community partner, so that's very, very helpful and we appreciate it within the town, so thank you for that. I'm going to go over to Staff, any comments, Staff?
Yeah, so kind of as Ms. LaRue kind of alluded to, so they, they're currently operating in the mall under a one-year lease, and this is to get the special permit for, in anticipation of signing a longer-term lease, that's when the special permit is required. So that's what they're here before you tonight for. So there's no seats, there's three employees, they work within the hours of the mall, and you can kind of see on the screen here that the entrance here where Legal Seafoods is, that it's then two tenant spaces in, so they're kind of in that area of the mall, and other than that, we have no other concerns or comments with this application.
Great, thank you very much. Let me start off with Ms. Natale.
I have no questions, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ampemba.
I'm good.
Okay, Ms. LaRue.
I have no questions, but I'm not quite sure how there's been gelato in town for a whole year, and I didn't know it, so I'm going to have to come by.
That's what I said.
Thank you. Mr. Covino.
So Caleb, can you get to taste the bar?
Not yet, but I mean.
Okay.
There's always.
Great, thank you very much. I have no comment as well. Is there a motion for the public hearing? Right, anyone here to speak for this particular item? No one's here?
See no one online, Mr. Chair.
Okay, let's go for another.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd further like to make another motion to approve the request of Nova Land LLC for a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.10 Restaurant Fast Order Food and Takeout of Article 4 of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws to permit the use of an existing tenant space for a gelato and bakery store known as Nova Gelato and Bakery for property located in the general business and Aquifer Districts at 75 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington Mall, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have minutes. We have two minutes, one's from August 15th, one's from September 5th. I didn't have any issues. Anybody else have any issues? We're good to read them and vote?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for August 15, 2024, and September 5, 2024.
Second.
Okay, all's in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Okay, we have one abstained, 4-0-1. Thank you. Okay, next, other matters, discussion at the Town Center Middle Housing. Staff?
Sure, so I sent out earlier, I think, either last week.
Last week.
Last week.
Week before, yeah.
A kind of draft of kind of first go at the Town Center Middle Housing. I based it on 40R language, which is kind of, it's a state program that is for zoning areas that they want, you know, walkable dense housing in, you know, mixed-use areas that they want to kind of concentrate development. And so we aren't going to use that specifically because the requirements don't really match what we are looking to do, but it was a good kind of template to use, and it is based on, based on rules and regulations and bylaws that are, I believe, from North Hampton, or no, actually Amherst, downtown Amherst.
Very nice, yeah.
And so I kind of adapted that to our use. You know, I honestly like it as, you know, would have liked it as the official town, like I think it would be good as like the Town Center bylaw language. It's really kind of exactly what I feel like the vision is, but for just this, just for this, this item, you know, this would just be for middle housing areas, which we're looking at Terry Ave, and then Rant Ave, and then the Mass Glass site because.
Yeah.
Where on Terry Ave would you?
We were digging the whole Terry Ave.
Oh.
And it's an overlay district, so the intent is, if you're an existing business, like you can do what you want, but if you want to do something else and include some type of housing.
A nice transition area from.
You've transitioned, so that is the intent.
Great, thank you, Staff. Any comments from, anyone here? Yes, Ms. LaRue.
I know all of you still probably want to go through this and go over it with Staff. A couple of things that I think we need to discuss further is what percentage of affordable we're looking for, and I think we're probably going to have to do a little research because we want to have as much affordable as we can, but we need to make sure we don't make it unattractive to developers, and we're not exactly sure where that lies. So I think that's going to be really key. I also, I like the, we don't have the map, it refers to a map, we don't have a map.
Yeah.
Liz just told you where it is, but we need a map to go with it because I think one thing that's really key about this, we're going to be bringing it to town meeting in January, and it's going to be going at the same town meeting as the Development Director's larger project on Mall Road. What I think is really important with this project is that we keep it very tight and very targeted to a small area because I think that's how we're going to get town meeting approval, and then when it works and it looks good, we can expand in the future.
Okay.
But on Terry Ave, like where exactly would you put it?
The entire Terry Ave.
So you could redevelop the buildings.
But it doesn't change.
Oh, okay, because I'm saying with all those businesses.
Businesses that are there can stay.
Stay.
But if in the future, those businesses say they have to expand, and this place is no good for them, and they're going to move somewhere else, and they could sell that property to a residential developer.
I get you, I get you.
And put it there. The hope would be that over time.
Future, future.
Yes, it's going to take time, it's not going to change overnight. I think Grant Ave would probably be likely to change over more quickly.
Where's Grant Ave?
That's the street that runs behind, like where True North and the Ice Cream Store are.
All over there.
Parallel.
Another transition area.
That would sort of be the way they have a, like, back at CVS.
Yes, exactly. Exactly, so you go from the Town Center to middle housing to residential.
What we were trying to do when we identified these areas is look for areas where there was industrial property right up against residential property, and if we can provide a buffer, the residents are going to be happier probably having a multifamily community like townhouses or something like that right next to them as opposed to an industrial site, and the people that are living there can walk to town amenities, they can walk to the bus, they can walk to the ice cream store.
Great idea, yeah, I like that idea.
You want them to be able to use the retail, get out of the house and use the restaurants.
Yeah, just like how it is.
And walk around and bike around. Yeah, I think we did hear.
So they want to keep it tight.
Yep, I think we did hear feedback from the Terry Ave area anyway that that would be preferred, right?
Yeah.
I think that's their vision as well.
Definitely.
And the gateway to that particular neighborhood. Yep, great. Thank you. Anyone else? ADUs.
ADUs, so that is still a work in progress. We hosted the North Suburban Planning Council meeting, that's a group from MAPC of surrounding town planners in the north suburban area, and we had a meeting just all about ADUs and talked about how we were all going to kind of, how we were going to amend our bylaws. I've gone to a training session that's very preliminary. I also spoke with everybody in the building department, so, you know, every plumbing and electric and, you know, Mark Dupell and everybody, to kind of just say, okay, so what does the building code say for these? And so, you know, how are, how is this, how are you planning on enforcing these? I don't know the building code, what does it mean? How many meters can they have? You know, how are you, you know, their biggest thing was, if it's an ADU, it has to have a specific firewall separation. And then I think from there, we can take what their parameters are, and their parameters were kind of in line with mine, I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page, and kind of go from there. Things to think about, you know, do we want these to be attached? Do we not want them to be attached? I've reached out to Lisa Mead about, and maybe Joe, you might know about this, you might be a good resource to kind of, is deed restriction. So if you're going to have an ADU on your house, you know, is it a possibility to put a deed restriction on it so that it can't be, you know, say condoized or two-family it or something? So I don't know if that, I don't know, Joe, if you know the answer to that, it's, but I think there's a, people's gut reaction, I think, is going to be that, you know, condoized, and now we're going to have a neighborhood with a bunch of two fam, you know, that type, that's what I've heard. But I do think that this is going to be an extremely helpful law for.
Let me ask you a question. So from your perspective, what's the difference?
What's the difference?
Between having an accessory unit and it being a condo?
No, you have to divide the property. You have the ownership.
No, I know, I know the difference legally, but what, from anybody else's perspective other than the owner of that property, what's the difference?
Would they have to divide the land?
No. No. But land could be held in common.
Yeah.
Yeah, common land.
I mean.
Right, but so the point is this, I guess the whole point of it is, it's an accessory, it's an accessory unit, it's not an in-law.
Right.
I get that, and an in-law, you know, it's a different story altogether. You can't, you can't rent that out to a non-family member, right? So, and it has to be open for the units. But from anybody else's perspective, what's the difference between an accessory apartment? If you allowed it to be condoed out, given the same, you know, square footage requirements that you would require for an accessory apartment, what's the difference?
So I, I mean, I honestly, personally don't have a history with it, it's just, it's the anticipated questions that we're going to get at town meetings.
It's more likely actually to bring in more tax dollars. I'm not saying I'm for it or against.
Right.
But the point is, from anybody else's perspective, to condo out an accessory versus a, you know, the primary unit, nobody would know that but the people that own it, and you know, public record obviously would know it, but from the outside, you wouldn't.
Would be the same.
The exact same.
The neighbors, yeah.
It's already two different, two different families that are occupying it, so. Whether it's condo or not.
That's right. The only thing it would do is bring more tax, probably most likely bring more tax dollars in if it were two units versus one.
So one thing that I did speak with the building inspectors on is that they are very adamant that this type, if you had an ADU, that it would have to be only one meter, one electrical meter.
Oh, really?
Really?
Because it's an accessory use.
Well, maybe we can benchmark that.
So that way, if that's the case, then if you're renting that out, how do you know who's.
You'd have to include, you have to include the utilities.
And put some sort of ballpark.
You can rent apartments out.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
But that is one thing, and that's, this is also what I heard from, so when I had the NSPC meeting, the building inspector in Stonem was also there, and she said this is our.
But why do they want it to have, why do they not want separate meters? I'm curious, I just.
Because then it becomes, it is, it becomes like a main, it's no longer an accessory.
Well, it really isn't. If you, it's really, to me, it's more about square footage requirements and the percentage requirements. Now, I think it's got to be no more than like, what, 25%?
25, 30%, something like that, yeah.
So, I mean, how does that change by having two meters? It really doesn't.
That's what I, yeah, I don't.
That's a good point, so we'll take notes on that.
I can double-check on that.
They pay a question for state, I think a lot of it should have.
I also, Caleb, do you remember why I, why they said it was only one meter?
I think it was.
I think that's the way it is now, and I know it is in other towns. My brother-in-law has an accessory dwelling unit added onto his house for his sister, and they could only have one meter, but I don't know why the building department doesn't want two meters.
When addressed, there might be a reason, but let's go, let's go, put that down as a question.
There's probably a reason.
We can ask them tomorrow. I can get those.
State building code.
Yeah, it might be state building code, that's the other thing, is it depends, the building code, and Mark was, I remember, I feel like Mark was adamant.
Yep.
But that is coming down the line, I am going to be bringing that stuff to town. I mean, there are certain parameters that we can decide, like is this something that we want to have attached to the main dwelling currently these are, or you can say, do you want to allow something above like a detached garage, or do you want to have something?
Right, okay, great. Yes, Mr. Covino.
Can you tell me, when is the state going to come out with their?
Their guidelines, requirements?
So EOHLC, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, they have not given any date. I don't, I think they are so backlogged with MBTA communities that I don't think that they're going to really be able to do anything super substantial.
So we could go to January town meeting with guesses more than facts.
I'm not, well, I mean, I don't, I mean, I wouldn't go with that.
I guess that's probably a little bit.
When does the law go into effect?
The law goes into effect on, at the beginning of February.
So we have to do it in June.
So it's going to be, I mean, obviously, we're going to give it our best guess, we're going, I mean, it's going to be vetted through our, Lisa Mead, like, you know, I'm going to be talking to other planners, like, you know, what are you guys doing? How are you doing it? What's your, you're a town, you know, so it's, I mean, and it's, we're all, all towns are in the same, but we are lucky because we have three, three town meetings because most towns don't, and on, I think it's February 7th or February, either the 4th or the 7th, you will be able to go into the building department at any town in the state.
How can the town do that if they haven't put out their regulations?
Well, then it is.
It just defaults to whatever the state law says.
Oh, okay.
February 7.
So I just, I actually just thought of one thing, is
Yeah.
With an accessory unit, the only restriction is, with an, with an accessory unit, the owner has to occupy, yeah, the owner has to occupy the primary or one of the units, and then they can rent it out to an outsider. A two-family is the only one that can rent out both sides.
So under this state
So the state, so this is a recent, this is like just changed like a few weeks ago, Joe. So the state housing bond bill passed through the State House, and in it, it states that ADUs throughout the Commonwealth are allowed by right
By right.
in single-family districts.
Yep.
You cannot require people be related.
No.
And so, and
Right, but what
But that doesn't change what I'm saying. And the difference between an accessory dwelling unit and a two-family is
Oh, okay.
An accessory dwelling unit, so with an in-law, you have to occupy, it has to be a family member, an open door between the units. An accessory unit is same restrictions, size-wise
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
dimensionally and all that as an in-law, but with an accessory unit, the owner can live in one unit and rent to a totally unrelated
Correct, yes, yes, sorry, yes, 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 exactly.
But with a two-family, they can rent out both units. They don't have to occupy
By someone who's not
Yes.
That's the difference.
Yes.
But again, you know, I mean, that may be the only difference in, I mean, I mean,